All right, our first item up is an appeal review and I think Ryan has this one.
I do, thank you very much. This site is located at the southwest corner of Ferris Road and Prince Street. It has received a conditional use approval for an eating place with a drive-through service and food store. The reason we're here tonight is per city code, there was a requirement for cross-access between properties. So the property to the west and their plans have provided cross-access to this property. What the applicant is requesting is that the city waive the cross-access requirements as laid out in the Conway zoning code. They can explain their reasonings for this here in a little bit. The way the code reads is all parking lots for non-residential property shall have at least one vehicular connection to all adjacent properties. The reason for cross-access is it provides ingress, egress to multiple sites. It allows motorists the ability to move between developments without using the roadway, ultimately decreasing traffic congestion on Prince Street and Ferris Road. The former planning director reviewed this initial exception request and denied it, stating that he believes that there should be cross-access between these two properties. We would move to uphold his recommendation to deny the request as it does not meet the standards found in section 1007.4 of the Conway zoning code. Is there any questions at this time?
Thank you, Ryan. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we're here. Greg Shaw, 1315 Main Street, for Brahms. And from Brahms, we have Cody Foran and Helen Passion and David Elrod, who put this transaction together. So the reason we're here is I've not ever been here for this reason. I've never had to repeal a site development review. I want to remind you, you all have voted unanimously to give the conditional use. The council voted unanimously to give the conditional use. But the reason we're still back with the planning commission is that the site development plan review, which we anticipated or knew was going to be denied, we couldn't take it up on the front end. So they have now gone through this process. This will be the third time on the third location, well, second location, third time. And so the time and money expended to get here, they've done on faith that we might could get this done, perhaps, with your vote. If you don't, this deal is gone. They first tried to put it on Hogan, Hogan and Prince location, but because of traffic issues, they pulled that. And then after Whataburger was denied here, then with the 24-hour service. We're not 24 hours, we're just the daytime service and into the evening. You know, the hours will probably be determined by the season, depending on summer, it might be open a little longer. Then we came back to, they came back before I was involved, to the same location on Ferris Road. And then they abandoned that site because of this very point we're here on, this cross-access agreement. And I'll just say this, that, and they'll support me on this. I visited with Helen one day on the phone, she's in the audience, and Cody. And I said, will you please talk to your, to the owners, Mr. Brahms? It's family-owned, they have 309 locations. And I said, would you please give us one more chance? Because the city of Conway is going to get a reputation, what have it somewhat, of not wanting products like Brahms here because of our arduous process to get things passed. And that's not, that's not a, that's not being cutting to you, it's our procedures. There's nobody, I mean, the procedures are written, we have to go by them and we're following them, that's why we're here. But the procedures and processes here are more difficult than any other city in these 309 cities that they've been to, except Dallas. That's where we are as a city. So I am preaching as well as proposing this project. We're, we're trying to grow and growth is not in our DNA because of our procedures and our policies, which, you know, I understand why Chris wrote his letter, I understand why the planning commission has said what they said. But this has already been announced in the newspaper, Brahms is coming, it's been on TV. They have TVs here, we have cameras in here the last time. Everybody says, well, great, but the procedures won't let us do it without your vote tonight. So this deal, I'm telling you, right on the money, was dead. And because Mr. Elrod, David and I convinced them to give it one more try, we're back. Now, you may well vote against it tonight, I would respect your vote and I might be disappointed in it, but I will respect your vote, however you vote. But this deal was dead and gone and Brahms was never going to come back here, not after two abandoned attempts. And so we're back on the same location. This is, I'm going to address some specific issues now after I've told you the background of it. On the staff report, there are a few things that we need to cover right here. And then I'm going to turn it over to Cody for questions because he has all of those answers. This was on the, on the site data, it says conditional use, eating place with drive-through and food service requested use. We already have that use, we've been to you, then we had to take it to council before we could come to this point. So they've had to renew their contracts with the sellers. The sellers, you know, I mean, it's a hassle for them to renew contracts, you know, Lori, how that works. You don't know that you're going to get it back, but we have a little more time to get this deal perked and running. There's no better place in Conway for Brahms than right there, and there's no better location, there's no better, there's no better purpose for this location than ice cream on that corner. But if we have to do the cross-access to Don Pepe's, this deal was dead. And I have pulled it out of the fire, the fat out of the fire, if you will, and they're back. So I don't know what will happen if you deny it now, but I know it was gone. I know that for sure and I can tell you more about it, but I don't want to right now. So the cross-access agreement, if you could, could we go back to that big schematic? Thank you, Lauren, of, and if you'll look at Don Pepe's to the left, you know what's to the left or the west of Don Pepe's? Well, that's Shadrack's Coffee, right? Do you see a cross-collateral access agreement from Don Pepe's to Shadrack's? You don't because there isn't one. So we have an inconsistent application of our zoning rules to this very exact same piece of property. Shadrack's and Don Pepe's weren't required to have cross-collateral access agreements, there is none. But we're required to, and it's going to come out on Ferris Road about, well, you can see, what, a few hundred feet from the roundabout? So everybody in south of Prince Street is going to use that. And we have two, they're going to come in that way, they're not going to go to roundabout, the morning site and come back, they'll cut across. And what that does for Brahms, it creates a liability issue. If there's a wreck there, a fender bender, they're going to get sued. It creates a maintenance issue because the garbage trucks, the food service trucks, everybody will come in that way. And everybody that lives south of Prince will come that direction. It will create a traffic jam coming in and out. It's going to put, see, we have two lanes of traffic, kind of like Chick-fil-A, coming around the building for service. Then they want to put a 40 or 50-foot easement, depends on which one you look at, behind the two lanes of traffic. You see the green buffer, it'll take the green buffer area out. The, the family that lives just south of us came and spoke, and spoke for us, if you remember. He got up on the against, but by the time he was done, he said, yeah, I think ice cream would be good, just to McDougal. He's the only person who spoke. And he doesn't want that, I'm speaking for him now, he doesn't want that access agreement because it'd put all the traffic right there by his house. And it will do away, I'm going to let Cody talk about that, it will do away with the buffer zone because you can't have that in the traffic entrance there both. So you can see on there how many people will, I mean, you can't see how many, but you can see that the people will use that way to get to Don Pepe's. And they have other out parcels, it's not just their restaurant, if you'll look, they have lot two, there's lot three, and then there's a lot four. They have more development coming. They have an approved ingress and egress to Prince, whether they get this or not. But I can tell you, they're not going to get access across us because we're not going to build it unless we don't have that access. That's where we are. It's not going to happen, I mean, it's just not going to happen, we're not going to do it. Because of the liability issues, the traffic issues, you know, Brahms serves everybody, but can, can you imagine? Or I'll say, I can imagine, I have five grandchildren, make it six, four and under. I don't want to go through that line and get out and park with all that ingress and egress going to Don Pepe's. And their place, we're not against them, but they have access. I don't want to take my kids there and face that with six four-year-olds, I'm not going to do it, four and under. I mean, it's just as a turnoff, but it won't matter what I want to do because it won't be built. So unfortunately, the fact that we've been through y'all two or three times, been to the council already and back, it still falls on your shoulder to either vote for this or not. We have the reputation among residential developers, that's me, and among commercial developers that we're hard to deal with. This is an opportunity to turn that tide and that's why I took the case. That's why I'm here, is I love Conway and I've been here forever. I don't want to see that, I'd like to see us grow, grow and grow, but we're hard to work with. And it's not anybody's fault, it's our procedures are so tied up in knots. They go other places and it's just, yes, that looks good sign here and it's done. We don't do that. We need a general overhaul of our residential development and our commercial development standards. We almost lost the Malle crossing out there because of exterior brick. How much do we need? Well, a lot, apparently that code hadn't been revised since 2020. There are a lot of new materials on the market, just to give an example. So I'm asking you on behalf of my friends in Conway, ah, everybody wants this, you know, everybody wants it. Most people think we already have it, but we don't. It's not going to happen unless you vote for us tonight. So having said that, I'm going to let Cody talk about other things related to engineering and how it lays on the ground. Cody Foran from Brahms, I'll be right here.
Good evening, everyone. I'd say a lot of the inconsistency we're seeing is in this development alone. The plat for the Delcar is platted at a 40-foot access easement that is 10-foot off of a residential zoning. We were told we have to have a 20-foot buffer zone because-
It's pretty hard on the bottom to him.
Because of the residential zoning to the south. So even if during the SDR, they were required to have a buffer, that access is still granted either way. You look at the site plan, it's just inconsistent. That was approved by the city. That shows a 50-foot access easement right on top of the line, that's for the residential property to the south. It's, it's just inconsistent. And I can go on, but if there's any questions, I'd like to stick to what you all would like to hear. I can ramble for a while.
I'll say something. First of all, I'm sorry for your frustration and the time that has been involved, because I too thought this was settled. I, I do have an issue and I guess this could be a staff question or maybe to you, but what is the purpose of, in such a short distance of coming off that roundabout? You are going to back traffic up all the way into Prince Street by having people turn in to there on Ferris. So I guess my question is to, to have a cut-through all the way through to two businesses that are already there that you can't cut through to. One, you can't, two, you can't. So whatever goes on the other side, you can't go through because you've already got one that's blocking it. So we've dealt with this before with a residential subdivision where some things were already done with sidewalks where you couldn't. So to me, this, and I'm just going to give my opinion, I think this is a mess-up, however it should have been. I don't want to lose a business in Conway again over something that, to me, that, that just doesn't make sense. And we also told the neighbor that there would be a buffer there. And if that goes away, we've gone against what we said we would do. So I, I'm not in agreement with the request to provide the cross-access. It's just my opinion. Thank you, Lori, does anybody have any, I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again, sir?
It's Cody Foran.
Thank you, Cody. Does anybody else have any questions for Cody at all?
I guess I'll just ask, is this a deal killer? I mean, I think that's what Mr. Shaw alluded to, but-
I don't personally have the authority to tell you that. My name's not an owner of the company, but, but I can, I can tell you for sure, I was, we were given the order to walk away from the site. And before Mr. Elrod and Mr. Shaw pulled the mirror plow for us to come back to the table. Now, I think it's fair to say that since that point, and we were, we walked through the SDR process because that's absolutely the process we have to go through to, to determine these next items, we've spent considerable money, considerable money on engineering. I, I would say honestly more than I've spent on due diligence on real estate sites. Usually we get to the city, we go through a minor site plan review process, get an okay, say, okay, you know, that generally looks good. Maybe there's a few items to work out during the building permit phase and that's fair. But, but in this case, I have a 95% completed civil set. I mean, in two weeks, I could have a 100% completed civil set ready for building permit review. Again, farther than I'd usually take any site before we even purchase the property. If we were to purchase the property, that'd be one thing, we haven't even completed the due diligence yet. This is literally trying to make sure we can absolutely buy the property and make it work for our usage.
All right, thank you, Cody, appreciate it. Want to hang out in the, they call that the batter's block, if, if you don't mind if you just hang out in the front so we can ask some questions if we have any more? Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this item? Is there any other public comment at all concerning this item? Yes. Please come up and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Greg Long with Craft and Toll, we're the engineers who worked on the Don Pepe's site. We're here on behalf of-
Address, please, sir.
Okay, we need your address, please.
Address is Craft and Toll, 65 Bradley Cove Road, Russellville, Arkansas.
Thank you, go ahead.
So number one, I'm, I'm not opposed to Brahms, will ya? I spent a lot of time in Oklahoma and eat at a lot of Brahms, so I'm excited that they're wanting to come to Conway. Second thing I want to say is that I disagree with the statement that was made that Conway is the most difficult city to deal with. I deal with a lot of cities in Arkansas and Oklahoma and I can promise you, I trade all of my projects for a project in Conway because of the staff and the way, the procedures, and I don't find them encumbering at all. So I appreciate the staff. So we've got a site plan that's been previously approved and is under construction. We've already put curb and gutter down to make this cross-connection. We, in our pre-development design meetings with the city, went back and forth about the requirements. We originally wanted two accesses off of Prince Street. They encouraged us to go in a different direction, so we did. And we complied with their wishes to provide cross-access instead of the two off of Prince Street. And so that site is approved, right, wrong or indifference, that's what we're building off of right now. Just came by the site, it's coming along nicely. We have that cross-access and if this is denied, that restricts Don Pepe's to one access off of Prince Street, which is a right turn only into our site. And so that puts a lot of restriction on the traffic in and out of our development. And as has been pointed out, we, it's a larger piece of property there. We do have some potential retail space to still build out in the future. And had we gone in a different direction and not provided this cross-access, which we think is a good idea, but if we did not have to do that, we could have exchanged that asphalt that we're putting down for more retail space. And so we don't, you know, it's, it's a financial deal there. So now if this is not upheld, the denial is not upheld and we have this no cross-access, we've got a, a drive to nowhere that's already partially built, that our client will have to pay out of their pocket to, to remove and to figure out how to use that space. And so you're putting a burden back on, on our client. I, I think this is a no-brainer. We have followed the requirements in good faith, understanding that that cross-access would, would be there. So that's where our, our client is at. And so we encourage this body to uphold that denial and require this cross-access. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Questions for me?
Question for you. From back of curb to property line, do you know how many feet that is off the top of your head?
From the back of curb to the property line, I think it is 10 feet, I believe. It's eight or 10, I don't know off the top of my head. Now, we provided, we showed a 50-foot, but that was not all for the, just, was not all for just the cross-access. There's a utility easement in there as well, so.
So I guess you're not going to have true cross-access because you can't get through the other side, right?
We'll have cross-access to, to one property. You know, we'll have access to Ferris Road. I suspect, I don't know this for sure, but I suspect that the creek was the reason that cross-access wasn't required to the property going to Shadrack's. I don't know that for sure. But all I know is when we presented our plan and went through the pre-development consultation with the city, they said this is what we needed to provide and that's what we provided in good faith.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, I'm going to call this back into commission. I've already called it back into commission, sir, thank you. Ryan, will you come up, because I do have a couple of questions for you before the other commissioners ask questions.
Yes.
So when we were dealing with the other eating establishment that would possibly come into that space, I remember seeing the plat plans that showed Don Pepe's and them working in conjunction with the city for that cross-access.
Correct.
Do you know why that hasn't occurred with this particular property?
I don't, we require cross-access on all non-residential properties. We've been upfront with them, saying that this needs to have cross-access between the sides. I can't answer why it doesn't. One thing I would like to point out, this does not have to be a 40 or 50-foot drive. There's a 20-foot minimum drive for cross-access. So even though the other one's larger, it can break down to a 20-foot drive going across and then out to Ferris.
Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
And the landscape buffer that they have to provide is from our conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
And how much does that drive cut into that landscape barrier?
It would depend where they wanted to put their drive at. We don't have any set plans where the cross-access would occur right now. They would just have to provide 20 feet somewhere.
So?
20 feet's the minimum. With the cross-access travel out 20 foot is the minimum.
So Laura, I don't know the procedure here, but I think it would be beneficial to hear the applicant's response to some of the things we've heard, if that's still doable.
Cody Foran with Brahms, 3000 Northeast 63rd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. So I would, I would put back in that, that currently there's a house sitting in the way of that cross-access easement that cannot physically be extended over to the east of Ferris. Y'all vote no tonight, Brahms goes away, the house still remains. They cannot have access across the house unless somebody decides to buy the house. That's, I mean, it's pure, it's pure and simple.
Any other questions for Cody?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any thoughts, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I'm a little confused on the whole order of operations, on how we got to this point, but it seems to me we're in a situation where we're either gonna, you know, go against what we potentially, you know, told Don Pepe's in their review or the, the buffer to the, the house in the residential area. And so I, again, not sure how we got to where we are, but I guess one thing that always sticks with me is consistency and, you know, if, if the thing's in the packet and, you know, some of the points that were made today is that this, this isn't being consistently required. And that has gotten us in the, in the past and causes confusion and clutters things. And if there's a rule that's not consistently being applied, I would certainly hate to run off a good development, which obviously I think Brahms is, and to attract projects like this, I'm, I'm supportive of, of not requiring the access and going against the director's decision. That's why I'm as well.
And I guess just one more thing to add is we're looking at a functioning business right now. Shadrack's only has access to Prince Street. So, well, they're not, they can't get through this cut-through to Ferris, so I guess-
But they are required cross-access to a adjacent property, but their cross-access is the property, if you're looking at the front of them would be to the right. So they have the cross-access there, if somebody were to ever build, they would have to tie in together. So I guess the question that I have is, say we uphold this decision, obviously coming across tie-in to the existing cross-access, you would have to impede the landscape buffer. So how does that affect our CO process if we're not meeting the requirements of the conditional use permit that we've put on it?
It doesn't have to impact the green spikes, like Ryan said, you know, it's a minimum 20-foot aisle cross-access. If we made that 20-foot across Brahms, to me, it looks like we could still have a 20-foot landscape buffer.
So you'd have to cut back if we're only 10-foot to back a curb on the other property. You would, and, you know, you have, you'd have to cut a corner of it, it wouldn't be entirely, you'd have to cut back. It would be cutting a partial piece of it, but not the entire thing. But you would impede it at least slightly in a curve.
Right, they could potentially lose a couple of parking spaces. But if there's a middle ground somewhere, that might be it.
So not that this impacts where I'll be on this, but what's, what's next step? So are we, does it stop here, does it go to city council?
If you, if you grant the appeal, then it's granted. If you uphold the denial of the original exception request, they do have the option to then further appeal to city council.
Okay. And after that, regardless, a final SDR will still come back to you guys, correct? Like this isn't the end of the road?
This is part of getting SDR approval, is, is the resolution of this request.
Okay, so regardless of where we go here, it still is coming back to you guys to approve finally?
It's, it's still in process, yeah, we're, yeah, still looking at it.
All right, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Ryan possibly. And I hear what Adam's saying about like inconsistency type things. My question I think comes into the legality in applying, applying the rules. Don Pepe's, we basically forced them to do this curb and gutter and cross-cut and with the Whataburger happening way back when, it was all being planned together and now we're facing, well, we're forcing them, but possibly looking at not forcing the, the next one to do it. So what are the legality issues with that? Ryan, can you-
Yeah, that's probably a Charles question.
So I just want to make a comment because I'm, I'm just listening and I know that we use the term consistent when it affects how we're going to vote as a body. But there are times that we have not been consistent, especially when the room has been crowded. We've gone exactly opposite of what D code or what we would say the ordinance is. So I don't know if using that as a blanket statement of, let's be consistent, we have not done that. So I think we just need to consider this.
I agree.
We just need to consider this for what it is, either we vote for it or you vote against it. But using the word consistent, I just kind of, just a comment. We, we have not been consistent, so.
I agree, I, I guess to further clarify that point, I'm, I'm saying if, if this is something that's inconsistently applied, why are we going to let it scare Brahms off, which I know everybody wants?
But if Don Pepe's has a cross-access, so does Shadrack's, next to it, the other property, or the code, they follow the code as well, I feel like we would be inconsistent in not making it here. And I, I'm excited about Brahms, I want Brahms, you know, but I think if a, a deal breaker is a few parking spaces in order to follow the rules that have been established and other businesses have followed, then I mean, that's a decision that they have to choose to make.
But, but I'm still, I, I don't know that we're following all of the rules because again, I'm not clear why-
again, I'm not clear why this wasn't already, why we're back here anyway, when it's already been through city council. I'm also not clear on the 20 feet, the 40 feet, is that buffer still going to be there, which we told the public it would be? Is it all going to be there and still be able, are you talking in and out traffic right there or one-way traffic?
Two-way.
Because you've got a double, a double line.
Two-way, I guess, to Don Pepe's, but that's the problem. We've got two lanes coming around the building and then another two lanes going in different directions.
That's, that's what I'm not figuring out where they're going to go.
It's a danger for our.
Mr. Shaw. Hey, Mr. Shaw, we're in, we're in commission right now. Hang on just a second, sorry.
But I guess that I'm still, what I don't want to happen is what has been said tonight and what we've heard before. Money has been spent, time has been spent, engineering has been spent, redesigning has been spent, um, time. And, and I'm still not, I see, I can think Chick-fil-A, two lanes are coming in there and then you're going to have two, I mean, just look at that. Then you have two lanes coming in off of a busy street. It, it doesn't make sense to me with the issues we heard about the roundabout and the clogging that up and all of that. So I guess I'm just still confused. I don't have.
And maybe it's the location because it's on that corner.
Right.
That may be what makes it a little different than the other ones because of that corner and then being the roundabout right there.
I understand your, your thoughts on, hey, money's been spent, but the ordinance was in effect prior.
But why wasn't it communicated to the applicant early?
It was, and it's in the, it's in the code. But if you're going to do a development.
If you'll recall, the applicant actually submitted, this is an exception request specific to development regulation. It's not a variance or a waiver or anything else. If you'll recall, they actually submitted this very request with their conditional use permit. However, the code states that an exception request to any part of Article 10 must company a site development review application. So they really couldn't even bring this request until they submitted for site development review.
Yeah, and maybe.
Which we communicated that very clearly.
So then.
And they just weren't to that process yet.
Then, uh, i- if that's the case, then, and I, and I know that I get confused on what's put in this packet, what's been vetted by staff and what hasn't. But what's the explanation for the examples in here that are pointed out where this wasn't required?
Which examples do you mean?
I gave some and.
In the packet.
Okay, so if you'll look.
The Slim Chickens over, that, that's one of them that they put in.
If you'll look at, at the Slim Chickens example, the approved site plan for Slim Chickens is directly across the page. Slim Chickens does provide cross access to the north and to the south. They are stubbed out both directions with pictures from the site, but please remember Slim Chickens was developed after both adjoining properties were developed. In the future, if those are altered or redeveloped, that cross access will be connected. So it's sitting there, ready to go. The Lowe's and the medical office building, that are the other example, were both developed prior to the adoption of the requirement for the cross access. So they were developed prior to 2002.
And the, so the development over on Dave Ward where Andy's is, Taco Bell and all that, that all has the same sort of style of cross access, which we were discussing here tonight, right?
Mm-hmm. But like Starbucks doesn't go all the way through.
Starbucks has cross access to.
Goes through the other way, but not to connect.
I do think there is a topographical constraint there. If you look, there's a retaining wall.
Well, yes.
But they do have cross access to forsaken.
Correct. Yeah.
Right, which is a nightmare getting in and out of there.
And the other businesses.
So slims.
Yeah, it is.
Slims need cross access.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Laura, I mean, the, the question you raised that we don't have an answer to, which I wish we did, is a good one and a fair one, but my bottom line is to attract developments like this that we want as a city, we need to work with applicants and I'm not going to vote to stand in the way of getting Brahms. So that, that's going to be my bottom line. But I would, I would love to hear the answer to your question.
Um, Brian, we obviously have a lot of thoughts on opposite sides here. Is there anything else that the city can provide as they're weighing out this decision?
No, I mean, it's, it's a part of the code. We applied it every site. Now on the Shadrack's, we should have had them stub out to the other side also. That was a mistake on staff's part. Uh, when that property beside them develops, we will try to go back and have Shadrack's make that connection so that we, we connect the entire block.
The western portion of the Don Pepe's site hasn't been reviewed yet?
Correct. They'll have to stub out, um, towards Shadrack's when they develop that portion of the site. Um, we're just following code. I mean, cross access is something you see in most cities, so.
Do you know why it wasn't with Shadrack's?
It was just a mistake on whoever reviewed it.
The fact that this is in front of us, right, means that there is some process to get this waived, right? I mean, and that was the decision that Chris made and said, no, we're not going to do that.
Correct. The applicant is following an available appeal process as a result of that exception.
So that, to me, answers some of your questions, Laura, that this isn't, this is part of the process and this is a decision that we can make.
I don't think that, I'm not against Brahms. I mean, that is, I was just bringing up the consistency. Like, I don't want it to seem like, hey, she's going to vote against it. That, that wasn't my plan at all. I'm just saying that, exactly like you said, there is an appeal process. So just saying we're going to be consistent, I just think that that's, we're either allowing the appeal and we vote for it or against it, but I'm just, just saying consistent, we've not been consistent regardless of what the, if it's a commercial business or residential. That's all I was, that was my point. I like Brahms. I was planning on voting so that they can still come, just to make that clear. But if we're going to use the broad umbrella of consistency, then what you said is exactly what I was trying to say. There is an appeal process and they're here, but if we're going to be consistent, we do need to start trying to do that.
Now, I'm, my, I don't disagree with anything you said, Letitia. I think we will continue to run into these types of concerns based on the fact that we're not a new planned city, right? Like, there's always going to be some old example that requires the review of exception, which is why we're here.
I think where I am struggling, um, and I'm, I've become very fond of Brahms over the last couple of months in my travels to Northwest Arkansas, um, I think where I am struggling is everybody wants this great product to come in, but I also don't want to discredit the small business that's right beside them and all of a sudden they're not as important because they're not as big of a deal as Brahms or something like that. Like, they are spending the money in our city, just like this new entity coming in, and I don't want to discredit. They have followed to the letter of the law, what, what the city has asked them to do. And I don't want to hurt their business to allow another business to come in. Like, I wish there was a simple way to, to make these come together, to have an agreement of, yes, we can do this and this and everybody's happy. And it consistently feels like we're put in a position because, as this last time, like, there's, there's inconsistencies and so it keeps landing at our lap to try to figure out of how to bring all the parties together. Anybody have any more comments or questions before we bring this into a vote?
So we have to have six in favor?
We have to have five. This is a majority vote. It's not a public hearing item, so it doesn't have to have quorum.
Okay.
Cody, did you raise your hand? I'm going to allow Mr., go ahead and come back and address and then we'll go to vote.
From the start of this entire process, we had a completely different design that allowed traffic to come south on Ferris, take a right, and then head straight. We had a completely different drive-through layout, completely different drive-through layout. Mr. Kurt, Kurt Jones was real serious about traffic and control congestion, and it has been a huge concern, literally from the first site we worked on at Hogan and Prince, um, a couple of years ago, I think, to this one. Traffic and congestion has been the biggest, and I, I've listened to the Whataburger, um, planning, planning and zoning and the city council, traffic was brought up quite a bit everywhere. We, we redesigned this entirely based on Mr. Jones's suggestions. Granted, this is more of a traditional layout, but we did this entirely for congestion and traffic purposes. This has got to be a safe buffer. It's got to be, it's got to, we can't have issues with congestion or else nobody's going to win here. Nobody's going to win. I think we've, it's been said before that no matter who develops this corner, you're going to have concerns of this. So it's our job as a proposal here to really mitigate those concerns. And I think we have, we have been, we have done everything in our power to follow exactly what has been asked of us here regarding that. Something else I would move for is why is this such a big deal to us? We are underparked. This is not a normal amount of parks for us. We have three different usages in this building. We have a drive-through, a restaurant, and a grocery store. We have 40 or 51 parks. I think the building code requires 55. So automatically, and we're required to have a buffer or a, a landscape aisle on either side of the parking rows, we're going to lose five to seven parks immediately. So if I do the math on their building correctly, I think Laura told me, Lauren told me it was 3,881 square feet, which came out to, uh, 46 parks, if I'm not mistaken, per the development code, and they show a total of 56. So they're currently 10, and I'm not here to degrade anyone's whatsoever. I'm just saying in general, if it's a, a impact to them, it's an even bigger impact to us because we're going to lose five to seven parks that are absolutely detriment to the success of this property. Plain and simple. They have 10 more parks and they're required by their square footage of the building. We have a bigger building. We also have three different usages, but this, our model is fine with the parks we have. If we lose five to seven more, it's going to significantly hurt us. And it's really going to be a madhouse when people start trying to fill the available spots. That comes, you know, we, we've got 309 locations, like, like it was mentioned. We, we definitely know what our businesses need to succeed and 51 is pushing it, honestly. 51 is, we, we usually design around 50. If we can push more, we can, but I mean, this site is optimized to the maximum amount of parking I can possibly put on there. I, I mean, this is what, I, I draw site plans daily and, and this, this is maximized. With the buffers that were required, with the detention that's required and landscaping that's required on islands and everything else, I mean, if those weren't required, yeah, we could stretch it more, but this is following every other development code to the letter. And I would love to answer any questions that anybody has to, to really clarify any point that's been said tonight.
But there could be overflow parking next door if needed.
Can you elaborate a little?
So the property adjacent to, you know, if Brahms parking lot was full, there's a cross access, customers could park next door if needed.
If I understand cross access easements correctly, that is strictly for driving from one spot to the, or from one lot to the other. Parking agreements, from my experience, are completely different. So that's kind of the point here is what we're saying is that it almost, we almost feel like it's being forced upon us to, to give this to, um, this access and it's, it's just not feasible for our business, for everything. We, again, when you force the, the requirement of this, it kind of takes away, like paragraph six of my letter, it kind of takes, takes away of that agreement. Maybe that is an agreement. We give you access, maybe you, we, you know, parking or whatever, some side agreement that allows private developers to work together. At this point, it, it just feels like it's a, a negative impact to us and that we don't have that ability to work out any type of agreement with the neighbor because of, uh, and why would they? Why would, why would they want to work with us when they're, they're, they were given, they were told that they could have access? But that hurts, that hurts anyone here.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Me?
We're back in commission, sir. We, we. That's what I want. Like, I'm, I'm here to let y'all have all the information, so. I'm all back up, sir. This will be the last comment before we go to vote.
Thank you. Greg Long with Craft and Toll, 65 Bratty Cove Road, Russellville, Arkansas, representing Don Pepe's. Um, you're in a tough spot. I realize that. Statement was made that they have 309 locations, Don Pepe's has two. They're a lot bigger than Don Pepe's. But, again, they, if I'm understood this right, they have not purchased the property. Our client has. They haven't received site development review approval. Our client has. They haven't started construction. Our client has. They're request, requesting you to set aside your ordinances. Our client didn't do that. We have, we are in construction right now based upon an approved site plan. They've said, you know, that it'll kill the deal. It won't, it won't kill, it may kill this deal, but Brahms is a big outfit and if they want to be in Conway, they'll find a place to make it work. I promise you that. If they can't, they need to hire an engineer like Craft and Toll and we'll help them make it work. So.
Okay, we don't need that.
So don't, don't bow to the scare tactics. Brahms is coming. They'll be here. It's too good of a market for Brahms not to be here. They'll find a place for it to work. We're just asking for consideration of the money that we have already spent, construction underway based upon an approved site plan and promises that the city made to us. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Kind of follow-up question?
Yep.
Do, do you have like, um, a way to quantify what that would be?
Not right now. I couldn't come up with that as far as a monetary value. Can't right now.
I'm just trying to gauge the magnitude, but okay, that's, that's, I get it, yeah.
Significant amount of money that we've spent.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? So in order for this to pass, we have to have at least five yes votes. Yeah. Yeah, we'll do it. What, don't we have?
We need a, we need a motion first.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy to make the motion. I'm, I'll, I'll be voting no, but I'll make the motion in the affirmative.
We have a second.
Second.
You had the second.
Motion. Okay, hold on.
All right.
And the motion is to uphold it, correct?
I'm moving to uphold staff recommendation, yeah.
So, to be clear, a vote yes would uphold the denial, a vote no, vote to grant the exception and allow them to proceed as requested. Everybody agrees?
Mm-hmm.
So can I be clear? A, a no vote is for Brahms and a yes vote is against Brahms. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you guys. Thank you for letting me do that.
It's confusing. We get confused, too.
We're talking property here. Yes, not against Brahms. It's, it's, it's the cross access. We're talking property, not businesses.
Okay, so we have a motion from Adam and a second from Mark. And we'll do a, uh, we'll do a.
Yes.
You want me to do this, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
Or do you need me to do it so you can?
Nope, I'm good. Uh, Laura?
I need to come the way and vote if.
Sorry, you're correct. Uh, Alexander?
Yes.
Adam?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Letitia?
No.
Lori?
No.
Ethan?
Yes.
Jensen?
No.
I am a no. That leaves us at five nos and three yeses.